And we can go ahead and call to order. This is the March 16th special meeting of the Cordera Town Council. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Council member Lee. Oh, sorry, council member Katisa.
Here.
Council member Lee.
Here.
Council member Ozia.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you, Rebecca. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We have an exciting night tonight. We're going to be interviewing and then deliberating on the 10 applicants for the vacant seat on the Cordera Town Council. That's going to be our first agenda item tonight. So the the item number two is discussion and action to appoint a new member to fill a vacant seat on the Cordera Town Council. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to staff for a brief introduction of our process here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a momentous night indeed. You know, I'm happy to basically be part of this and introduce. We now have 10 candidates. We did have 11, but Ms. Sasser, due to a great professional opportunity. So good for her professionally, but bad for her public service. She had to step out of this process. So we will not be interviewing Ms. Sasser tonight. But we do have 10 candidates. It's really an amazing diverse group, as you can see in the from their resumes, and we're really excited for you to interview them tonight. Our process, to talk about it a little bit. There are currently no legal provisions in the law regarding this process. And so staff worked closely with our cohorts in other cities and towns of best practices in the town attorney's office to really ensure a process of fairness and equal opportunity for all of our candidates. This process leading up to this meeting included a few key steps. The first one was making sure that every candidate knew and knew that staff and the council were available to answer any questions to help them as they did their studying and prepared for this, prepared for this interview. All the candidates were also offered the questions in advance. So it was an equal footing. Everybody knew what was coming. And also to ensure that everyone has an equal amount of time. And so tonight, it is really key that we stick to the process. Rebecca and I are going to lead the questions, and we'll walk through that right now to ensure that we provide everyone an equal 15 minute time slot to really answer our questions of our council to get to know them. Our process is outlined in the staff report. We're going to provide two to three minutes of an opening statement. We're going to ask four questions. Each question, the candidate will have two minutes to respond to that question. And then we'll have approximately two minutes for a closing statement or anything else the candidate would like to add or speak to specifically. That process, if we stay on track, will allow us an additional two minutes if council has a specific follow up question based on what they heard from the candidate. We do have a limited amount of time to ask one follow up question. At the conclusion of the interviews at approximately 7:45 tonight, we will then open it up to public comment, members of the public, and then make any comments to council regarding the candidate list. We also have received a large amount of public comment via email. Those have all been posted to this agenda as of 30 minutes ago, I believe. And so please, I believe the council has access and has reviewed those. Also, members of the public, please take a look as well. And then what we'll do is we'll close public comment. We'll come back to the council and council will deliberate on their selection of the next council member. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And one other thing is, we also are going to put up a timer. You'll see on the timer, the timer actually, it outlines what I just said. So it'll have the opening, the four questions and the closing statement. So it'll allow the council staff and most importantly, the candidate to stay on task and on track.
Hey, Todd, I just thought of one question that I forgot to ask for you and possibly Amy. I know you said that that all the council members made themselves available to candidates for questions, you know, prior to this point, and I know that some candidates availed themselves of that. Should we disclose if we had any prior communications with any of the candidates?
Since it was
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, if you want to disclose, you can. But provided that council members did not deliberate outside of the public meeting, it's not essential. And I know the council members did not deliberate outside of the public meetings. So there's no need. It's a little bit different from a fair process here anywhere you're making a determination in a case. Good question, though.
Understood. Okay, thank you, Amy.
Okay. Does all have any questions regarding the process? Okay, let's get started. Rebecca, do you want to bring over the first candidate?
Okay, I am bringing over Leela Mongan. And then, as you can see, the interview schedule is there. Hello, Leela. Are you able to share your camera? Great.
Hi, Leela.
Hi.
Good, good, okay. So did would you have an opportunity to hear the overview of the process?
I did. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, let's get right into it. So the opening statement, using no more than two to three minutes. Please briefly provide some of your background and why you are interested in being appointed to the town council and whether you would consider running for election in 2022 for a four year term if appointed.
Absolutely. Thank you. I want to thank you all for taking the time to hear from me and from all the others tonight. I appreciate the way you've organized this process to be fair to everyone. My name is Leela Mongan. I live in Madera Gardens. I've been here for 10 years. I'm originally from the Seattle area. And professionally, I'm an attorney. Most recently, I worked for the city attorney's office in San Francisco, where I worked on public governance issues. But right now, I'm a stay at home mom chasing after my 10 year old daughter and my six year old son. Why I'm interested is because I love, I love Cordera. I love this community. I love this neighborhood. I know a lot of moms and families around here. That's kind of the world I'm living in right now. But I have, you know, made it a point to try to meet and support others in our community as well. And one of the things I'm doing right now is volunteering through Good Ferry Marin, where they match you up with a neighbor in need. So there's a senior around here who needs help bringing her trashcans in and out and her packages up to her porch. She's not very mobile right now. So I've enjoyed doing that and getting to meet some other members of the community that way. When I was growing up, we faced a lot of challenges and it meant that we moved around a lot. So I never really had the sense of being rooted in one place. And that's something I just really love about Cordera that people are so welcoming and friendly and that you can really feel like you're part of a community here. And I'm excited about the ability to try to help share that with others and to help others feel that who live here as well. Where my family is very invested in Cordera. Our kids go to the public schools. My mom actually moved here after she retired. So she's in Cordera now. My husband grew up in Marin and his family is down in Sausalito, where he grew up, and we plan to stay here. My husband likes to joke that when, well, I don't think he's joking, actually, but that when we're too old to drive, we're going to walk over to the Rite Aid and get an ice cream cone. So we're very invested here. I'm definitely open to running in 2022. My sense is that government doesn't always move that quickly. And I don't think a year and a half will be enough to feel like I've really accomplished what I what I hope to accomplish as part of this team. I think I have a lot to contribute. I'm one of the residents who's working on the Casa Buena project, the housing for people experiencing homelessness that's over by Marin Joe's. And that's really given me a taste of sort of being part of local government and has shown me that I really do have something to contribute. I think our council should look like our community as much as possible in terms of reflecting the backgrounds and experiences and viewpoints of all the people here. So I think I have something to add to that. And I think, you know, as much as possible, we all have an obligation to serve where we can. And as my kids are getting older, I'm finding myself with more time to devote to things like this. So I appreciate the opportunity to apply.
Thank you. Okay. Question one. As a member of the town council, you'll be responsible for serving a vibrant community with those needs. And sometimes you will find that one part of the community's needs may conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach such a situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
Sure. I think this is a really important question. You know, on any issue, people are going to disagree. And sometimes they're going to feel very strongly about it. But in my experience, I don't think people expect, you know, to get their way every time. I think what they want is to be heard. They want to feel like you've really made an effort to understand their point of view. And they want to feel like that when you do make a decision, you took into account all of those various points of view and factors that you heard. So my goal as a council member, first and foremost, to be the listen and to try to understand where people are coming from, what the issues are and why it's important to people. You know, ideally, you can find a solution that most people like. Not always possible. And, you know, when that fails, then you use your personal judgments along with everything that you've learned and heard from the community to make a decision. And especially where something is contentious and people disagree strongly. I think it's really important that those decisions be made in an open and transparent way and that you explain your thinking in terms that shows that you really did consider all of the various information that was presented to you. And it doesn't end there. I think you need to keep trying to engage people, even if they feel like they didn't get what they wanted. One of the things we saw with Casa Buena is initially, you know, the community was really debating, do we want this housing here? Should we accept this housing? And when it became clear that we didn't have much choice in the matter and it was coming, whether we wanted it or not, that actually really freed us up to start moving in a more positive direction of, you know, given that this is happening, how can we make it successful for everybody? How can we try to make it the best experience possible? So I think that's important, too.
Thank you. Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you have worked collaboratively within a team.
Sure. My experience with community work and in my professional life taught me that collaboration is absolutely critical for any team effort. I've worked on teams throughout my whole career in various roles and on various issues. And what I've learned is that, you know, what collaboration looks like can vary. When I'm charged with responsibility on something, I take on more of a leadership role. I found myself doing that with the welcome baskets for Casa Buena, where we had volunteers from the community go out and shop for items that could be given to the new residents. And in that sense, when I'm, you know, feeling more of a leadership role there, I still really value input from the rest of the team. I think you need to take advantage of others' expertise everywhere that you can. But then I'm happy to take responsibility for it and drive the project forward. In other times, someone else is the quarterback and they're taking responsibility for it. And then I'm happy to be in more of a supporting role. I try to be, you know, in that case, more of a resource for them, a sounding board when they want to talk through ideas and just in any way that I can to try to help support them in articulating what their vision is and then achieving that vision. I'm not an ego driven person. I don't need the spotlight. I don't need a lot of credit. So ultimately, my goal is to get the job done well. And sometimes that means leading, sometimes that means supporting, and I'm comfortable in both roles.
I like the football analogy, by the way.
But in for you, Todd.
What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Um, so I'll start with a weakness. You know, an area that I struggle is sometimes hard for me to say no when people ask for help. I like to be helpful and I like to feel productive. So sometimes in the past, that has led me to take on more than I should. That's something that's actually been top of mind for me and considering this opportunity. And I've wanted to be really careful about that. So one of the things I learned that I need to do is talk to as many people as I can and make sure I really understand what I'm getting myself into. Talk it over with my family and make sure we have the resources that we would need and be flexible with my other commitments if there are things that I need to step back from. Because it's important to me that whatever I take on, you know, I not only do it, but I do it well. So that's an area where I'm still working on that one. Areas of strengths, I would say, I'm very analytical. My professional training has taught me to really question my own assumptions as well as everyone else's and to make sure I have all the relevant information before I would make a decision. I'm empathetic. I really like people and curious about people. I like to try to really understand what it feels like to be in their skin as much as possible. So even when I disagree with people, I'm often able to find a rapport with them and to understand each other. And then I would say I'm action oriented. I think it's important, obviously, to listen and empathize and then to analyze and make a decision. But then at that point, you know, you need to make a decision and take action. And I'm a mom, so I'm all about checking things off my list. I'm very comfortable doing that. And then I'll just say on this point that, you know, I think it's really helpful to be sort of adaptable and think about what the situation calls for, because there certainly would be times where something that's a strength in one context is a weakness in another.
Describe any experience you have had with the town and town staff.
So for me, that's mostly working on Casa Buena. I've had the opportunity to work with Todd, with you and Mike Moriarty, the Communications and Code Officer, and with Adam, the Planning Director. And had interactions with Rebecca as well. And I think in Cordera, we're really lucky. We have a very dedicated professional staff. They're, from what I can tell, you know, thoughtful, hardworking people. And they're really doing their best for Cordera. I don't even know if any of you guys live here, but you approach it as though you do with that level of investment. So I really appreciate that. I think, you know, to most people, the town council is probably a more visible expression of leadership. But we know that the staff is there doing the behind the scenes work. They have the longevity and the institutional knowledge. And I know that because I was staff when I was at the city attorney's office in San Francisco, where I would help prepare public officials for meetings. I would answer questions about, you know, open meeting laws or other issues that came up. And I really enjoyed that opportunity to collaborate, both with staff and with the officials. As a new council member, I would obviously work very closely with and and learn from staff as well as fellow council members.
Thank you. Okay, so this is your opportunity for a closing statement to provide any additional information or comments that we haven't covered or for council to consider. And it's all yours.
Thank you. Wow, this is going by fast. I hope I'm not talking too fast.
You're doing great.
I just want to say, you know, I think our town is really on the right track. I think we're doing a lot of good work. I know there's a lot of important issues that we're dealing with now, like climate change and the capital improvement plan and wildfire prevention and flood issues. There's a lot going on. And I would look forward to working on these important issues. I would also push us to look for ways we can be even better. I really love the idea of striving to be a model town that other towns, you know, seek to emulate. I have a demonstrated commitment to public service, both in my professional career and my personal life. I'm a hard worker. I try really hard to be honest and respectful and empathetic in all my dealings with others. I'm not doing this because I need to feel important. I'm doing this because I really care about our town and I think I have something to contribute. I think public service is an honor. And if I were selected, I would certainly give it my all. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to the council and the staff for your consideration and for all the work you do on behalf of Cordera every day. I know you have a lot of great applicants and I'm sure whatever you decide will be a good decision for Cordera. And if there's any applicants watching out there, I just want to say to you, thank you as well. I was impressed by not only how many applicants, but the quality of applicants. And regardless of who is selected, I really hope that we can all stay involved and that we can keep this momentum of civic engagement going. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great job. Okay. Mr. Mayor, we have time. Is there any follow up that you wish to ask at this time?
I don't think I have any follow up questions. Leela, thank you so much. That was really great to hear from you and your application was very informative. Do any of the other council members have any follow up questions?
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will move you back to the attendee side and the next applicant that you will see will be Shannon. Just a minute.
And as we'll bring in the next candidate over for council, just as a point of it process, if there is a question during this process, because we have a real limited time, is it possible to do, ask that question via chat? So it's on the record if someone does have a question that I could look at and ask the follow up at the end to keep us on track? Amy, would that be appropriate? Just want to make sure I don't miss anything.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, bringing over Shannon.
Hi. Hi, Shannon. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the hot seat. Okay, did you have an opportunity to overhear the the process of the questions? We have
I did, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, let's get right to it. So you have two to three minutes opening statement. So please briefly provide your background briefly and then why you're interested in being appointed to the town council and whether you would consider running for election in 2022 for a four year term if appointed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak tonight and certainly for the opportunity to be considered for a council member position. This is quite exciting. I appreciate it. It's unique doing it via Zoom, I will add, but happy to do it. I am very deeply rooted in this town. I was fortunate enough to be raised in Larkspur and Cordera and 11 years ago returned with my husband because we love this place and we knew it was where we wanted to raise our family. We now have two young children who are very involved in numerous activities and attend Neil Cummins Elementary. And the town has, I think, very much helped sort of shape me in my upbringing and into the adult that I am. Professionally, I'm a nurse practitioner. I work at Marin Health Medical Center, formerly Marin General, in the emergency department, caring for this very community. And it's been a great joy to be able to do that to care for all of Marin, but specifically my local neighbors. I know that this year in particular has been so difficult for everybody. And certainly, as a frontline worker in the ER, I have witnessed the difficulties firsthand. But I also feel like I've witnessed the positives that have come out of this year. I have seen this community specifically come together, rallying around neighbors, helping strangers. And and it's left me very inspired, particularly as we're at this turning point and hopefully, the turning point of this pandemic. I have a new sense of optimism. And this has helped strengthen my desire for public service, specifically for Cordera. So I feel that in my years here, I have come to understand how the town has evolved and the world is changing, certainly. But I'm hopeful that if appointed, working together collaboratively with the council and staff and with a broader outreach in the community, we can help shepherd this town into the future and in the best way possible, maintaining its great character and sense of community.
Thank you. Okay, question number one. As a member of the town council, you'll be responsible for serving a vibrant community with diverse needs. And sometimes you will find that one part of the community's needs may conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach this situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
Well, I have a sense that this is inevitable. Conflict is natural, for better or for worse. And certainly, in the position of serving an entire community, there are diverse needs and diverse opinions, for sure. I think the best way that I have learned to handle situations of conflict is to listen, to hear all sides as best you can, to educate myself on the matter and try to educate myself from different perspectives, to really try to understand where everyone is coming from. And I think throughout that, because of some hot button topics, there's going to be tension and there's a need to diffuse the tension while maintaining a fair and balanced approach. And ultimately, coming at it with education and knowledge and hoping that you find an answer that serves everyone as best as possible.
Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you have worked collaboratively within a team.
For those who know me well, they'll say that I'm a natural born leader. Heard that my whole life. So I often do take on a leadership role within a team. But I also very much know when to step back and take direction. I have worked as a team through every aspect of my professional career, every day. Every patient I see, there is a team of us addressing this patient and caring for this patient. And my typical role, as I said, may be to lead, but but it's listening, it's working together. It's it's taking cues from your other team members to really work collaboratively.
What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Okay, strengths, always a little difficult to speak your own praises. But, um, you know, I think my biggest strength is I'm compassionate and I believe in equity. I have worked for many years, specifically in underserved populations, providing healthcare and now in the emergency room. Even here in beautiful Marin, there is an underbelly. And I have the fortunate opportunity of seeing that and caring for people who need additional resources and additional care. So I think that my determination to see all people equally certainly is a strength. I'm open minded. I'm eager to learn. I am very much dedicated to finishing any project I start. And and I'm quite good at juggling multiple things. Now, in terms of weaknesses, that leads me to it. I think at this point, my biggest weakness is probably the competing priorities that I have as a professional and a mother and now hoping to serve our community in a larger role. But I also think that I it's a strength because I've learned how to do it. I think most mothers have. We have a lot of balls in the air, but knowing where to focus at different times and to give my best to whatever I say I'm going to do. I'll find a way.
Thank you. Okay, describe any experience you have had with the town and our town staff.
Well, I will say, having lived here for so many years, I have been fortunate as a resident to participate in many town activities through the Rec Department, Fourth of July, speaking at town council meetings over issues that were important to me. More recently, I've been involved with the Christmas Tree Hill Neighborhood Response Group on the medical team, which has been great working with our neighbors on the hill and getting to know more of them. And certainly a blend of my personal interests in terms of healthcare and emergency services and preparing our community. And I, and through the process of applying for this this position, I've had a great privilege of work of meeting Todd and and working with Rebecca and certainly meeting most of the council members. And it's been great. I feel very optimistic about potentially joining this team. It seems that it's a very well oiled machine. People work well together respectfully. And I hope to have the opportunity to join.
Thank you. Okay, closing statement. You have two minutes. This is your last opportunity to provide any additional information that you'd like council to consider.
Okay. You know, I I know that right now in Cordera, there are several big issues at hand. I think that dealing with climate change and climate adaptation, certainly the housing issue, I know this has been spoken of, probably the largest factors. But one of the things that I think will play into those large issues as well as smaller issues is the idea of incorporating more of the community in the happenings of town and getting more involved. And community outreach is something that I feel is a great strength of mine. I'm very well connected in this town and very committed to this town. I I really, when we moved back to Marin, we could have lived anywhere. And we felt so strongly about coming to Cordera because it had the character that we want. And we want to raise our children here and give them the roots that I was fortunate to have. So as a potential council member, I hope that I will bring that passion with me and work together collaboratively to to make this town even better.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have no follow up questions from council. So you are out of the hot seat.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon. I will switch your role back to attendee. And the next applicant I will bring over will be Jordan.
Hello.
Hi, Jordan. How's it going? Good evening.
Hey, Todd. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity.
It's great to see you. Thank you. So now you're on the hot seat. Okay, so I did see It's great to see you. Thank you. So now you're on the hot seat. Okay, so I did see you on the at the start of the call. Did you hear the basic overview of the 15 minute outline for the interview?
I did. I've been on it from the beginning. Thanks.
Okay, good. So let's let's get right to it. You have, let's let's start with the opening statement. You have two to three minutes to briefly provide some of your background. To share why you're interested in being appointed to the town council. And also whether you would consider running for the election in 2022 for a four year term if appointed.
Great. So I moved to, I was born in Detroit, Michigan, but moved to Tiburon when I was three weeks old. So I take a little artistic license and say I'm a I'm a Marin native. I grew up in in Marin and in Tiburon and Mill Valley. I went to MCDS, which would have been my first experiences in Corder Madera. In the early eighties and then went on to Redwood and UC Berkeley from there. I left Marin after after college at Berkeley and lived down in Texas for about 10 years. I got an MBA at U T Austin in the early nineties. And I opened and ran a business in Austin, San Antonio as a concert promoter and venue operator in the mid to late nineties, working with some some national touring bands, Black Crowes, Indigo Girls, Santana, bands like that came and played at the facilities that I was I was operating. That was not going to be a good family career for the long run. And so I sold that business in 99 and came back to Marin. And went to law school at Berkeley. And after law school at Berkeley, I actually moved to Corder Madera. I was living in San Rafael and Larkspur during during law school, but my wife, my new wife and I bought our starter house in Mariner Cove. We lived there about 10 years, had two daughters there and when our right around the time we were planning for our third daughter, we moved over to Christmas Tree Hill. That was about 10 years ago. And my kids are three girls, six to 14 now. So been living in Corder Madera for about 20 years. Professionally, my background is I'm a lawyer at the Cooley Law Firm in San Francisco. I run our Asia Pacific practice. By by trade, I'm a venture capital lawyer. I form investment funds day to day. I work with about 60 clients and negotiate venture capital deals with institutional investors as my as my day to day trade. Hey, I'm interested because I think the town does, a couple of the candidates that came before me said this and I agree with it. I think the town has a lot on its plate, a lot of important issues coming up, and I think the town is really at a good spot with how it's being run and I threw my hat in the ring in case, you know, my particular skills would be additive to to the direction of the town. And yes, I would consider running in 2022 if selected now.
Santana, I didn't know that about you. Interesting. Okay. Question one, as a member of the town council, you'll be responsible for serving a vibrant community with diverse needs. And sometimes you will find that one part of the community's needs may conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach such a situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
Yeah, I mean, this is really, I think what I do day to day is I help intermediate difficult situations. You know, I could joke and say frankly, years ago I was doing that because musicians are difficult people, but you know, in my my present career for the last 20 years. Every day I'm sort of finding time, looking for middle ground, looking for solutions and compromises that you know, are sensible and let all the parties walk away feeling like they were somehow benefited. I think it's worth emphasizing, you know, I'm a corporate lawyer, right? So I try to, we try to get deals done, right? It's quite different than litigation. We're always working for consensus and trying to, you know, trying to make a deal happen where everyone can come out of it with with something that benefits them. You know, typical day for me might be negotiating with the SEC or CIPIS or other federal government agencies, or it might be negotiating with with CalPERS or CalSTRS on their investment in my client, but it could also be things as simple as over the years I've worked with you know, veterans, disabled veterans seeking benefits that were being shut down by the VA and having trouble accessing their benefits or working with families that were subject to deportation and enforcement proceedings or before before ICE or other other agencies. You know, it's I think it's not always possible to find middle ground, but I think it's it's more often than not possible, my own theory about, you know, finding middle grounds and and working in a vibrant community with where people are going to be on different sides is that it takes deep understanding. You know, I think it takes compassion. I think it takes being able to put yourself in other people's shoes and really put the work in, the hard work in to reach a consensus. And that's what I would try to do if chosen for this job.
Thank you. Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you have worked collaboratively within a team.
So I I lead a team right now of about 50 lawyers. I've worked in teams for a long time, you know, back from my music business career, even even before that, and also in volunteer situations over the years at kid schools and so forth. I always sort of think back to this one management experience I had in college where I I was a in the management training program at Chevy's, right? Chain restaurant. You guys probably all know Chevy's. And you know what they do is they they make you rotate and do every job, right? You're for one week, you're you're every job in the restaurant. The whole thing takes probably 20 weeks before you get through that training. And I always think back to that and whatever I do when I'm working in teams because I think it's really important to gain an understanding of what everybody on that team is going through. You know what their position is, what their job entails, what their role entails. You have to really gain an understanding. And and I still employ that today. You know, I wouldn't presume to kind of understand someone on a team, tell them what to do or get involved in rulemaking about them. If I didn't really understand and hadn't really spent the time to, you know, get to know their view, their job, you know, what what they're going through. And you know, I think if you proceed thoughtfully and with empathy and understanding, then people trust you, they open up to you more and you get even better decision making as you're trying to make decisions and lead teams. So in anything I've ever done, I've really tried to, you know, understand, have empathy and put myself in other people's shoes to 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 lead and to reach consensus.
What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
I agree with the candidate before me. I think it's hard to talk about your own strengths and and weaknesses, but let me give it a go here. Listen, in terms of strengths, I would say I think I'm good at time management. I think I'm very productive and I think I'm very driven. When I start something, I try to finish it. I really, I'm kind of wedded to this theory of deliverables in my life. And I hate to fail. And so I try hard to deliver on what I set out to do. I also think, you know, I can think big. There was, there was a problem in the in the industry, in the legal industry, in the fundraising space of what I, what I, you know, where I work every day and about four years ago, I actually started a company extracurricularly with the with the blessing of my law firm to solve this industry industry problem and the company was successful. We sold the company back into our law firm and it's still the sort of cloud based solution to the problem that that kind of is the number one thing being used today in that space. So I think a strength is I can think big and like, you know, if there's something really really big needed to solve something, I have some experience, you know, driving stuff like that. And then I think, you know, my background, that's both business and legal and nature, I think is is helpful. Especially something I always carry with me and I think could be additive for the town is is I'm really into customer service. I always try to think of people around me like like customers, not people on the other side of a deal, you know, like delivering good service to people. So in a role with the town, for example, how could we, you know, what could we do day to day to deliver a great service experience for people in their interactions with the town? Hey, in terms of weaknesses, I mean, I'm probably too passionate about what I do sometimes. Maybe I'm too too driven and tend to sometimes hang on too long to things. Maybe I need to be better about realizing that, hey, you tried this, but you know, you took it as far as you can and it's fruitless. So give up. Okay, there's a bell.
Describe any experience you have had with town and our town staff.
So Todd, I've worked with you and RJ and others on fire safety, on road issues, some historic flooding issues up here on Christmas Tree Hill. I did a major construction project and lot line adjustment, had a lot of interactions with the generation of staff that came before you primarily. And I I learned a lot in that process. I I learned that smart people can be pretty uneducated about how municipal process works. And I learned a lot about not assuming that town staff know like, like if your neighbors really feel like something is good, I think I learned that you've got to really help town staff to understand that. So you know, how's something going to be a net plus for the community? So I've learned a lot in my prior interactions with with the town. Hopefully it's all all for the for the best.
Thank you. Okay, closing statement. You have you have two minutes to provide any additional information that you would like the council to consider.
You guys have a really great selection of well qualified people, which is inspiring. I would concur with those who came before me that it's really great. And I'm really glad to see that so many of my community members have taken the time to volunteer to be considered and are are passionate about this job. You know, I appreciate the chance to highlight my own background and experience, what I might lend. I think very, you know, other people bring other strengths. I've spent a long time in my life in Marin and 20 years in Corder Madera. So why am I doing this? I feel like you know, maybe this would be a way that that I could give back and I would commit that if selected, I would bring all of my energy and try to do a great job, you know, for my community. I think the town's headed in the right direction. I think the staff and the council are, you know, hitting the nail on the head right now. And this is, this is also what drove me to throw my hat in the ring for for this position. So thank you all. I appreciate the chance to be considered. Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Thank you. Great job. And I it doesn't look like we have any additional follow up questions from council, so you're done. Thanks, Jordan.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Jordan.
Okay, thank you. I will move you back to the attendee side and the next applicant that I will call on will be Emily Charlie. Welcome, Emily.
Hello.
Hi, Emily. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good evening. Okay, so did you have an opportunity to hear the overview of our 15 minute interview process?
I did. You're checking.
It's interesting too, being, you know, a city attorney, you're you're right next to our town attorney on this call, so it's
You just you just classifying us or it's just alphabetical?
I don't know. I don't know.
I've been profiled.
Okay, Emily, so we have for the opening statement, two to three minutes. Please briefly provide a background. Why you're interested in being appointed to the town council and whether you would consider running for election in 2022 for a four year term if appointed.
Sure, certainly. So first, good evening, council members and members of the public, and of course, my fellow applicants. My name is Emily Charlie. A little about me, I unfortunately did not have the good fortune to grow up here. My father and mother came to America in their late teens, early twenties, respectively, and settled on Kansas. It was a good childhood, admittedly filled with some amusing culture clashes, I'll call them. But we did miss the opportunity to have extended family around. As such, I learned from a very early age, the critical importance of community and that lesson has very much stuck with me. As I grew up, I set my eye on the Bay Area and nearly 30 years ago, I moved from Kansas to San Francisco, where you might rightly wonder if I encountered some more culture shock. By the time selecting a place to raise my little one rolled around, though, I knew exactly what I wanted. I had done my research. I had visited friends in all corners of Marin County over the years and weighed the options. And I selected the community of Corder Madera quite deliberately. And I can say I know of no greater endorsement of a town than to actively choose to raise one's child there. And that is what I did in 2017. I moved my toddler to Corder Madera. As a new parent, new to the town and with a young child and no extended family, I immediately set about forming that critically important community. Because my son was not yet in the school district, I had to go door to door to meet my neighbors and I joined various groups. I am happy to say now that the sense of community that I was seeking has been found in spades. I know all of my neighbors, we pull together as one, we look out for each other. It's lovely. My son is now in kindergarten, so that community has expanded still further. There is certainly room to deepen those connections and to meet and know even more of our townspeople, which is something I strive to do. I don't want to be too effusive here, but I can say with absolute accurately accuracy that a week does not go by where I do not remark to my son how lucky we are to live in Corder Madera. And I do so to model gratitude, of course. But it's made easy by the fact that I genuinely feel grateful to live here. I really, I truly love this community and I am committed to Corder Madera. And that is actually why I started speaking with some friends about running for council in 2022. Some time ago, as a public agency attorney for nearly 20 years, representing cities and counties and special districts throughout California, I have government experience from which I knew that I could draw. Coupled with my desire to give back, I made that decision that I would run a few months ago. And having made that decision, I reached actually out to one of the council members with the intention of getting a jump on the process and educating myself. Only to find out through that conversation that the issue was going to be taken up much sooner. So that's a long way of me saying willing to run and intend to do so.
Thank you. As a member of the town council, you'll be responsible for serving a vibrant community with diverse needs. And sometimes you will find that one part of the community's needs may conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach such a situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
Sure. So at the outset, I want to acknowledge that there are circumstances where not everyone on all sides of an issue can have their means met. But importantly, everyone can be included in the discussion, respected and heard. So I'd like to go back up a tiny bit because my approach is to first confirm whether there truly is a conflict. I think that it's easy to assume a conflict with when different opinions are around and to settle on the idea of a winner and loser on any issue. I find there's a lot more gray area that can be uncovered through dialogue and engagement. So first, to understand the existence or extent of any conflict, I like to listen carefully. So that I can understand what the real motivation is driving seemingly different opinions. Oftentimes, they are closer than one might think. If possible, I draw out commonalities. You can explore creative solutions and compromises when you know people's true motivations. And sometimes it's possible then to resolve a conflict by identifying that underlying issue and addressing that. So said differently, I approach these types of situations, not sold that there's a conflict just yet. But instead, looking to find ways to bring the sides together. That's not always possible. Where it is not possible, where there's a zero sum decision is required, where one side is going to be displeased. I work incredibly hard to ensure that that side knows that they were heard and their opinions were considered. Finally, I make an effort to actually follow up to see how things turned out at the end, to get updated information, see if there's anything new or different that that can be done. I believe that how one behaves after a conflict has ended can be just as important. And I found that this last step discourages lingering negative feelings and also tends to reinforce the longevity of community relationships.
Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you've had, when you've had, when you've worked collaboratively within a team. I'm sorry about that.
Sure. So I hope that my originality is not called Matt because for me, the the same types of traits of engagement and communication and listening that answered my previous question are also part of this one. So I address conflict as I address being a member of a team. And by that, I mean, I try to keep conflict out of teamwork and I try to bring teamwork into conflict. Teamwork is definitely a large part of every day for me. I do not necessarily typically take any particular role in a team. Drawing from my professional work, that's where the majority of teamwork is occurring in my in my life these days. At the outset of any case, we establish trial teams. And a role on a trial team depends on expertise. And that means that in any given team, I might be the lead. I might be a contributor or I might be taking direction. I personally, I appreciate this versatility because it keeps me intellectually nimble. And I'm not wedded to any particular position. I have to practice understanding and being understood. When I'm in the lead, I enjoy taking responsibility and When uh I'm in the lead, I enjoy taking responsibility and mentoring as part of that. Where I'm a contributor, I enjoy the brainstorming and providing a fresh eye. And where I'm taking direction, I like learning new things and expanding my knowledge base. So a- as an example, I'm I'm free to share, I work with Caltrain to support electrification of the line from San Francisco down to San Jose. And so in that capacity, I am one of many team players. As legal counsel, I need to work obviously with uh and meet the needs of my clients, but also various agencies and partners that are both contributing to the work as sponsors and also those that are impacted, including the public. Um, the property owners, for example. And so because as a public agency, we're charged with the the greatest public good, I have to factor in the analysis of the citizens that are impacted when often that might be perceived as an adverse uh situation. So you add in a council and whatnot, and you've you've got a very robust team that I have to build credibility with and and work with on a daily basis.
Thank you. What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Um, so I'll I'll limit both my strengths and weaknesses to what I think is applicable here. Um, rather than bragging about my parallel parking or confessing how terrible I am in the kitchen. Um, I am, I'm hardworking and diligent. My mother used to say, you want something done, you ask a busy person. I remember thinking that made no sense when I was young and and now it turns out it's correct. I prioritize, I find time and I accomplish what I say I will do. Uh, I also, I aim to arrive at the correct decision. It doesn't have to be the one I started with, um, or my opinion. So I'm inquisitive, I like to gather as many viewpoints as possible, and I'm tenacious in ensuring that I understand an issue thoroughly. And then once I do so, I'm direct and decisive. Finally, I think an important here is I'm ethical, transparent and keenly aware of municipal rules and procedures. So I think I could quickly get up to speed and and contribute. Um, so these obviously are just my weaknesses. All right, fine, so we'll leave humor off the list of of strengths. Um, actually, to my weaknesses, I think um two of the accomplished applicants before me indicated that saying no is a struggle, and although my kindergartner would disagree with this, I sometimes do struggle with saying no. Uh, because I do what I commit to do, I have to be very careful on this. And uh, which is why I gave great thought before deciding that I would run. And finally, as with most people, strengths can also be weaknesses depending on the situation. So for example, I've been told that my diligence can be tiring. Uh, and my inquisitive nature can feel pressing if a person doesn't know me. So that's something that that I'm aware of in how strengths and weaknesses can can fluctuate depending on a situation and one needs to be able to tailor oneself. I think I made that one without the ding. Just speed talking now.
Describe any experience you have had with the town and or town staff.
Sure, well, other than I think every person in this town harasses Rebecca at some point, she's so great. Uh, I have had, uh, I've worked with town staff on two more substantive projects. So one, the neighborhood park of Skunk Hollow offered my first introduction to town staff. In early twenty eighteen, there was termite issue and plywood had been put up to cover some of the worst parts. So I reached out to the town and I ended up meeting with the public works director at that time. I invited him to the monthly taco truck neighborhood event we have so that he could meet the neighbors and talk. Uh, it took some time, but just a few months ago, Skunk Hollow opened up newly renovated and I can attest the fact that I am still good friends with said public works director, so I didn't botch that one up too badly. The second interaction has to do with traffic calming on El Camino Drive. So as I understand, my neighborhood has long lamented the speeding on our street, uh, in talking to the neighbors decades of of being upset about this. So after hearing about it again and again, I suggested we work with the town to see if there was something we could do. A neighbor and I reached out to dozens of our neighbors, uh, got comments and then worked with the the new director, public works director, who's been super dedicated and responsive. Um, I had some ideas which were dead wrong. Um, and I've been educated and and understand the process better and RJ is working on proposals and he doesn't know it now, but we're also going to be friends years from now. Um, so those, I think, are the two more substantive uh experiences that I've had with the town and they've they've just been really positive. At least they have been from from my perspective.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the last, your last opportunity for a closing statement. You have two minutes to provide any additional information that you would like the council to consider.
Thank you, so I believe that I could be a valuable addition to the council, serving a talent community I love. I'm capable and eager and I would enjoy working with each and every one of you, but in any capacity, whether on the town council or not. The field of applicants here is impressive. And while that bodes well for the town in the long run and the immediate future, I confess, I do not envy you the job that you have this evening. Um, having been dinged with a timer on almost all of uh the earlier sections, I will uh answer any questions. I'm delighted to do so if you have them, but recognizing time is valuable, I will simply thank each of you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Emily, and it looks like we do not have any follow up questions from the council.
No requests for jokes, I thought for sure.
Well, if you got one, you have thirty seconds, make it count.
Oh, I do? All right, well, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily, I will move you back to the attendee side and then the next applicant that I will transfer in will be Carl Spurzen.
Look at that, we are back on track, we have one minute, we are back on track, look at that, good job, Rebecca, as always. And all the candidates, great responses.
Welcome, Carl, you can um unmute yourself and share your camera if you'd like.
All right, there we go, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, my apologies, total technical breakdown here. Uh, hey, everyone, um, first off, Rebecca and Todd, I wanted to thank you guys for how much effort you put in to get this meeting together. Um, I know these things can be uh time consuming, so anyway, I appreciate that. Um, uh, so Mayor Beckman and members of the council, um, thank you for your time and listening to us today. I've been in Corder Madera here for since nineteen eighty eight. Uh, my kids have gone through Neil Cummings, Hall Middle School and Redwood High School. Um, I'm very passionate about the town. And uh, I've thought for many, many years now about running for town council. Um, and my job at this point has finally provided me some flexibility to do so. So I'm pretty happy about that. Um, and um, I just think the town staff and what's going on in town hall is uh, some of the best I've seen in in my time here. So I'm excited for that and I'd be excited to be part of that process. I I respect very much the knowledge, the staff, uh, the expertise that's going on, um, much better than in the past. So it'd be it'd be very exciting to work with you all on that front, so um, I'll stop there.
Thanks, Carl, and Carl, your video's not on, I'm not sure if that's a bite isn't it or not.
Hang on, you know, yeah, here we go. All right, there we go.
Let's hear.
Is that better? There we go.
There you go.
Well, guys, I've got a new Apple computer and it's completely frustrating me and I have an appointment tomorrow afternoon, so sorry about that.
Well, thank you, great opening, uh, so let's start off. Uh, question number one, as a member of the town council, you'll be responsible for serving a vibrant community with diverse needs. And sometimes you'll find that one part of the community's needs may conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach such a situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, there's a lot of diverse issues in the town and I've listened to a lot of them at meetings and we've talked about them a lot in some of the committee meetings. Um, one I just kind of highlighted is fire safety up on Christmas Street Hill and the other hills versus flood control down in the flats. And it's kind of an interesting discussion to have because I think there's some, um, how shall I say it? Uh, the folks on the hill really need fire safety, but if the streets are flooded, we're not getting anywhere. So I kind of look at balancing that off. Um, in the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, we look at a lot of the projects uh and try and balance off, you know, which ones can be prioritized. Which ones, you know, we have the actual manpower within the town to do uh and accomplish. So that's kind of one angle. Um, and I think it's just important to take a step back and really listen to people and and kind of understand what they feel their biggest fears are. Um, there's talk about under grounding some telephone lines and power lines and such. And I think we'd all love to have those all undergrounded, but um, the the cost is just insurmountable and there's some questions whether such a a process would actually improve fire safety. So there's a lot of emotions that come around these issues and I think it's important to uh listen to those emotions, hear them out, work them into our thinking and do the best we can to to balance them off. Um, there's other demands that we see in town that I'm thinking about a lot, there's pension funding issues. Uh, we've got some pension bonds coming up, but I think will help that a lot and I think people need to understand that a little bit. Um, there's some questions I saw in some of the uh letters that came in, the senior and youth program support, that's part of our Sales Tax Oversight Committee. Uh, we did fund that this past year, we will continue to fund that. So I think the town is really doing a great job trying to get out there and support the programs with with the resources we have in the best way possible.
Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you have worked collaboratively within a team.
I, first of all, I consider myself a consensus builder. Um, the the situation I would describe here was kind of an interesting one. It was several years ago and those in Madera Gardens may not recall, but Lakeside and Birch actually dead end to property that is in fact in Larkspur. Uh, which is a unique situation when a developer came in and wanted to put in a substantial number of homes and even an apartment building. Um, you can imagine what that caused, uh, you know, the concerns around the the whole area. Um, so at the time, we had an improvement association, which I took over basically and managed that whole process, working very closely with the developer. Um, I hosted, arranged and hosted several meetings over at the rec center uh to get as many residents as I could there. Um, and really kind of lay out uh what the residents wanted versus what the development gentleman wanted. And we honed the thing back very well and only had seven homes built at the end of Birch, which was a great compromise. Um, and the other compromise is interesting because I hear it every week. The fire, the trash trucks come from Larkspur all the way over here to pick up the trash in Larkspur. Uh, and the Corder Madera ones do not, um, just kind of an interesting thing that had to be worked out. So, um, it was a lot of conflict, people didn't like the size of the home, they didn't like the change in character and everything else. But I think at this juncture and has for many years, it's been considered a great success and I think the the area is very happy about it.
Thank you. What would you consider your strengths and weaknesses?
Um, I'll start with with weaknesses. Sometimes I'm I'm just too passionate about what's going on in the town and and I have to kind of calm myself down. Um, I'll be around folks, close friends live in town and some are just really not all that interested in things and certainly the detail and the mundane things. So I I do my best to help them understand the issues and and do what I can, I just don't want to overwhelm them. Um, and at times I just feel I I can, I can handle a lot of problems at once. I try and solve too many things at one time, so I have to kind of take a step back, keep the issue separated and keep my focus on, you know, kind of going through one at a time as opposed to trying to kind of jump ahead and try and solve too many things at one time. Um, on the strength side, I do consider myself to be a very good listener. I've worked on that over the years in my business, being a financial advisor and in the institutional world prior to that. Um, really have to sit and just really let the other people talk and uh and really understand what what they're trying to get across. Um, I do feel I'm a quick learner uh on on issues that I may not be that familiar with. I think that's important in the town because the long list of issues the town is facing, um, you know, can be quite complex and many of them I'm not as up to speed on as others. Um, so, you know, it 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 just, I feel I feel I'm very good at the problem solving aspect of it and I think I'm good at picking up on issues uh that are important.
Thank you. Describe any experience you have had with the town and town staff.
Uh, I remodeled my home several years ago, that was an interesting process uh in planning commission. Um, but it was successful and there were some good people there and it all worked out. Um, so that's an interesting one. Uh, as far as my involvement with the town, I've been on the Financial Ad Hoc Committee and the Sales Tax Oversight Committee uh for a few years now. Um, and that's given me a great insight to how Rebecca and Daria and Todd, you work together. Some of the council members have been on these committees as well. Um, and I find them very informative. Um, and uh, I like that work, uh, it really helps me understand how the uh funds are being allocated within the town, the priorities that RJ may set on the infrastructure side and how we're spending that money. Um, and I just, I kind of, I I like that kind of work. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Okay, so you have two minutes for a closing statement, um, and so this is your time to provide any additional information that you would like the council to consider.
Um, I guess I'd just like you to understand how much I care about the town, the length of time I've lived here. Um, and my desire to really do something good for the town. Um, kind of at a point, I want to be involved in something a little bigger. Um, and I love the town and I think uh, I think there's a lot of issues that I can get involved in and help move along. There have been some good things that have happened over my time here and there have been some bad things that have happened over my time. Some of those issues still are yet to be resolved. Um, some purchases by the town may bother me a bit, uh, the Park Madera Center and things like that. So I really feel um, I committed to the town in a way that, you know, I want to improve things, I want to be responsible for uh the needs of the town. And uh, you know, my kids all went through the schools and such and I plan on staying here for a long time. Uh, if I were to be selected, I would certainly run uh in the next election. Um, and uh, you know, I just look forward to a chance to contribute to the positive movement that Mayor Beckman and you guys have pushed forward and I really appreciate that.
Great, thank you, Carl, I'm seeing no follow up questions from council members, um, you're done, good job, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl, um, I will move you back to the attendee side and then after that, the next applicant that I will call on will be James Andrews.
Unmute.
Hi, Jim, good evening, uh, did you want your video on for this interview?
I did before I just rebooted.
Okay, there we are.
We're good.
We're good, all right, good evening, thanks for joining us.
No, thank you.
Um, did you have a chance to hear uh at the opening, um, basically the structure of our fifteen minute interview?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so we'll start off with the opening statement, you have two to three minutes to briefly provide us uh with the background. Um, why you are interested in being appointed to the town council and whether you would consider running for election in twenty twenty two for a four year term if appointed.
Okay, uh, let me see, education, BA in economics and history, MBA in accounting and finance. My current day job is I'm a CFO, we're registered investment advisor. Uh, prior to that, I uh worked for various hedge funds, insurance companies and uh some large multinational companies. Uh, and basically from December of fifteen through March twenty twenty, I was a member of the Corder Madera Town Council. And uh, since the election is now scheduled for November, I would be uh interested in running for reelection. That's my basic background. Next question.
So as a member of the town council, you'll be responsible for serving a vibrant community with diverse needs. Sometimes you'll find that one part of the community's needs may conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach such a situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
The first issue, question is, is it really an issue that the town should be addressing? Because there are some things that come up that are interesting but not truly town issues. So when I, you know, when an issue comes up, I'm willing to listen to both points of view. I'll be open and transparent, but I sort of have a series of touchstones I look at when uh the questions come up, is it a local, local question? Is it part of the legal mandate that the town has been given by uh the state of California? The third is, does the town have the resource, staff time, staff expertise, financial capabilities to fully analyze and implement any solutions, okay? Uh, what other issues will we have to uh drop to deal with this, the current issues? And so that's, that's sort of the And so that's that's sort of the matrix I'm thinking through when those issues come up. And I'm trying to be fairly honest and sit forward with people so they understand where I'm coming from. So, next question.
Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you have worked collaboratively within a team.
I guess my entire service on council was part of a team. And it involved working with various members of town staff, town manager, and basically asking questions, being willing to act as a sounding board if they had questions or issues. And basically, the the best solution when you're working in a team is where everybody contributes. And at the end of the day, if you have a good solution, everybody knows that it's their idea. As opposed to one person claiming credit and another person feeling slighted. So that's next question.
What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
My strengths are my financial, my financial and accounting skills. I have been through the learning curve about being on council. So I understand what the issues are, what procedures are. I understand the various JPAs and other county organizations that were involved in. Town staff, I've worked with them in the past. I like them. I respect them. As I said, I'm very familiar with the issues facing the town. And above all else, I'm willing to do the homework to get up to speed on any new issues that come up or items that are coming before the council. My non strengths or weaknesses. Having been there for a little while and thinking about how I ran meetings, I would say when I was a member of town council, Barbara Bosio ran a very efficient and businesslike meeting, and I appreciated how he ran meetings. Watching Mayor Beckman, he's also run a very excellent, he's done an excellent job of running meetings. He's also a very good public face for the town and doing outreach, okay? And I'll confess confess that running efficient meetings is not one of my strengths. So that's about it. Next question.
So I think I know the answer to this one, but I'll ask it anyway, to be fair. Describe any experience you have had with the town and our town staff.
Okay, I was on town council, I had for almost five years, okay? I spent 2016 trying to understand the town's finances and picking the brain of the then incumbent chief of director of finance. Let's sort of learn the history of how we develop financially as a town, okay? 2017, I worked with the incoming director of finance, Daria Corilla. Is she sort of transitioned to a new accounting system and worked with her to come up with a and with and with the town manager, come up with sort of a strategy for budgeting and reflected realistic revenues, adequate liquidity reserves, paying down liabilities. End result, we now have an operating budget and a 10 year projection of that operating budget. We have a capital budget going out 10 to 20 years. So we have an idea of what our cash needs are. 2018, we realized that we needed funding for the capital part of the budget and succeeded in passing Measure F, which increased the sales tax override and eliminated the flood tax. And so we now have a dedicated funding source to pay for the capital budget. Encouraged the town to establish a pension trust, which they did. And then I also worked with the planning director to come up with an updated hotel ordinance that is, that emphasized consent, so that we usually have very strict rules about what you wanted. And here we closing statement, okay? Basically, what I want to do back on council, one, I've already been down the learning curve, so I know what the issues are and what procedures are. I want to see the long term financial strength of town maintained and enhanced. I'm currently ready, you know, I'm ready to hit the ground running. If I were to rejoin council, I have extensive knowledge of town finance. And there are a couple of additional items I want to see through fruition. One is sidewalk along Casabueina. And lastly, I want to start working better with the local businesses, help them recover from COVID shutdowns. Because I think we need to be much more sensitive to what their needs are.
Thank you, Jim. Great interview. It looks like we don't have any follow up questions from council. So that's it. Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I will move you back to the attendee side now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so again, Ms. Sasser was next up. Again, she, for professional reasons, had to back out of the interview process, and we just received notice from Ms. Kaiser, but she also had to back out of the process. So now we are next up for interview number nine, Mr. Bello. If Mr. Bello is on.
Yes, I did let the next three candidates know that we had another withdrawal to expect to be called on earlier, but they were all in the attendee queue, so they are ready to go. And the person I will call over will be Marcella.
Ah, there you go. Well done.
Hey, Mark. Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, thank you for having me.
All right, great. So you had a chance to, did you overhear like the 15 minute process for the interviews?
I did, yes.
Okay, so you're all, okay, great. So I'll turn it over to you. So we're going to start off with the opening statement. You have two to three minutes to briefly provide a background in why you're interested in being appointed to the town council and whether you would consider running for election in 2022 for a four year term if appointed. All you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for having me. And thank you, guys, for, guys and gals, for taking the time to do this. If elected, I, and I were to join this process, if I, I would run in 2022. My background is, I'm originally from New York. And I moved to Cora Madera in the year 2000. My kids, I have two kids who are now in high school, a senior and a sophomore at Redwood. They have gone, they were born in Marin General, they were born here locally and have gone through the school system from Neil Commons and the Cove and Hall and now Redwood. And I, to, to participate in in the town and, oh, you got, those you guys?
We have you.
Something happened to the screen. Sorry. I would, it would be a great honor to be able to participate and share in the responsibilities of governing and guiding Cora Madera, whether it's this, for this next year and a half or potentially four years after that. But, yeah, to be able to, to be able to participate, it would be a great honor.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, so question number one, as a member of the town council, you will be responsible for serving a vibrant community with diverse needs. And sometimes you will find that one part of the community's needs may conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach such a situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
It's a trick question, because I don't think everybody's needs can possibly be met. It's a great idea. It's a great concept. And it was Abe Lincoln who said, you can please some of the people some of the time. You can't please all the people all the time. What's most important, and I had heard it said, and I absolutely agree, is active listening. Empathic, active listening to truly hear both sides. I think you need to be able to really hear and understand each each person's position to be able to make a proper, proper decision. And I had worked at, it broadcast for a long time at ABC Radio and Disney. And I had, I had as a role model, a boss who sometimes we would have conflicts, sometimes there'd be an issue that we had to, maybe an account is up. And I'd have to go, we would go in front of this manager and and debate an issue. And sometimes it didn't work out in my favor and it would have a a financial impact. It would hit my wallet. But every time I left this particular manager's office, I knew I was heard. So I might not get the result of the answer that I wanted, but I knew I was heard. And and it's surprising, and it was a learning lesson, it was surprising how much that was satisfactory. That as long as I was heard and knew I was heard, I knew I was dealt with fairly. And I roll, I I model that in every aspect of my life, or at least I try to. And I'm aware of the impact of listening actively and offering a fair ear.
So true. Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you have worked collaboratively within a team.
I'll try and get to two quick examples. When my daughter was in sixth grade, she got an A in math. I was very excited. We went to the ballpark. We bought two hot dogs and I turned to my daughter who just got an A and said, how much are these hot dogs? She couldn't do the simple arithmetic. She had an A. How'd you get an A in math? You can't end up two hot dogs. It turned out that there was grade inflation at Hall Middle School. And we exposed not only grade inflation, but there were a great number of issues. Some parents got together, those parents got together, more parents, we put together a coalition. And it ended up hundreds of parents at Hall in front of the Board of Education. At the end result was there was a change in superintendent, there was a change with the principal, leading to, well, there was an important change to be had there. And as a result of that, I was part of the site council, which we rewrote the, what was it, the 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 Hall Cougar Code. So directly, having a direct impact on the future of those kids coming out of middle school. Yeah, the reality was their kids were getting an A in middle school and then failing entry level high school math. And that was, that was an issue. So that and then, then there's certainly COVID. I manage two small assisted living businesses. And this year has been very difficult in learning what this disease is, how to manage the disease and protecting the life of our residents, our staff. I work with Marin County Health and the state daily, weekly to keep that, this deadly disease out of our building and away from our people. Let's take in the phenomenal group effort.
What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
I'm going to say this, and it's a little bit tongue in cheek, but it's true. My strength and weakness is both that I'm human. And in being human, I don't know everything. And I'm going to put that back as both strength and weakness. So my weakness is, I don't know everything. My strength is, I know that I don't know everything. And I think it's really, really important. It kind of goes back to sort of active listening. If I know everything, I don't need to listen to somebody. If I'm aware that I definitely don't know everything, maybe I should listen. Maybe I'm going to learn something. And it's amazing how we see, read a newspaper and you'll see an example of how really smart people do really sort of silly things. And it could be just in part that, you know, we're smart and we think we know everything. And so I'm actively aware that I don't know everything.
Good answer. Describe any experience you have had with the town and our town staff.
Well, I've been voting for, for everyone seated here and have been voting in these elections for a better part of 20 years. And something really important happened recently in that I'm very fortunate, I feel very, very fortunate to live where I live. I'm in Mariner Cove. I have a water view. There's the sacred moment of every morning is sitting, having coffee, looking at it, at my spectacular view that I, I don't take for granted. Every day is different. Every day is new. And during this last year, being fixated, focused and we'll call it distracted by COVID in work, I woke up the other day, a couple of months ago, to find out that that the town had been working really hard. It's something that I really should have been paying attention to in the, the cap program. And, and that's something that would have an immediate massive impact. And I, I fell asleep. I didn't see it, didn't know about it. It's 100% my fault. And I can belly ache about it or I can participate, which is why I'm here. It was a wake up call to realize that there's a lot going on in this town that I absolutely took for granted. I wake up every day and I go and do my thing and I work where I work. But I was, I was asleep at the, at the switch, so to speak, of something that had a direct and immediate impact on my house. And for a better part of 20 years, house rich, cash poor and peanut butter and jelly and top ramen to make that mortgage payment. And holy cow, the most important financial investment in my life could get swept away. I was asleep and that's my fault. And I'm here to own that and participate if I'm, if I may.
Great. Okay, so now we have, this is your last chance. You have two minutes for a closing statement to provide any additional information that you would like counsel to consider.
I think it's, as I mentioned a moment ago, this, well, let me rephrase. The, to offer oneself for public service is is an honor and I thank each each of you for your contributions, current and in the past. And I think it's a noble way for one to spend their life is to be able to take their time and be able to give that not only for their family, but for their community. And as a single dad and small business operator, the kids are a little bit older. The COVID, we're all vaccinated, staff and residents alike, and that seems to be calming down. And I have flexibility in my schedule and I would like to participate if I may.
Great. Thank you, Mark. It looks like we have no additional council follow up questions. So you're done. Thank you for your interview. Great job. Nice meeting you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I will move you back to the attendee side. And then the next applicant that I will call on will be Phyllis Smith. Welcome, Phyllis. Are you able to unmute your audio and show the camera?
Okay.
Hi, Phyllis. How are you? Good evening.
Good evening all. How are you doing?
Doing great. Thanks for joining us. We're on the other side of the table this time.
Experience, I'm much like your side better. It's a lot easier.
Well, I have five questions to grill you. We have 15 minutes. Then we're going to start off with the opening statement. You have two to three minutes to provide a brief background. Why are you interested in being appointed to the town council? And whether you would consider running for election in 2022 for a four year term if appointed.
Well, I moved to Cora Madera in 2001 as an empty nester. And I have been And I have been involved with the town since that time. By profession, I do communications and strategic planning and it fits in with working in the community. I've been involved in both civic engagement and public service since I was a young adult. It's something I'm very passionate about. While here in Corder Madera, I've been on a planning commission for several years. And as the vice president, working to keep our community, the beautiful place it is, and trying to make applicants feel satisfied, their plans. Prior to that, I was a local elected official for 24 years and worked for two state legislators. In addition to that, I have, as a strategic planner, run several campaigns, both for candidates, for ballot measures and for propositions over many years, including some Corder Madera. I think it's important to give back to the community. We're very lucky to live where we do and it's just the way I see life. I'm applying for the vacancy because I want to continue working for my town and my community. As respects our plans for 2022, all I can say is that old political activists never fade away. We just keep finding ways to make good trouble. If I am lucky enough to be appointed, I will certainly continue on the council.
Thank you, Phyllis. Okay, question number one, as a member of the town council, you'll be responsible for serving a vibrant community with diverse needs. And sometimes you will find that one part of the community's needs may be in conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach such a situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
I think it takes a process that's threefold. First would be full transparency, very strong outreach. Second would be a study procedure, which would include workshops for the community. And the third would be objectives that lead to implementation. That's what the town has been doing. And to show two successful examples, one would be Measure F, which brought up the hats and sales tax, the three quarter percent and did away with the tax on, what's called the drainage, this was the individual homes. The community was apprised of what was going on. They were given the information they needed and it successfully passed, I think with well over 75% of the vote. The other would be the Tamil Vista Corridor Study, completely different, but the same process. And that was studying what was going on in Tamil Vista, bringing the community in with workshops to look how this would be a mixed use area. And after all this, it was put together, the zoning has been changed. Different plans have been made, including safety for bicycle and pedestrians. So working together, bringing people together gets results. Now, everybody is not always going to be happy, but they're going to accept it if they have been a part of it. If they understand what was going on, if they have been listened to. We all know as adults, we don't get our own ways, but we accept things when we understand and it's a part of the planning.
Thank you. Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you have worked collaboratively within a team.
I think the planning commission here in Corder Madera is a good example. There had been some planning problems in this town and the council took it upon itself to appoint people who had a background that would fit work on a planning commission, architecture, development, construction, et cetera. And what has happened, working with the very fine staff, we have come together and put together the rules and regulations. We found we really didn't have them. And one of the rules we made for ourselves is we almost threw a site visit when an application comes before us. And at the hearing, we have to announce whether or not we did it because it's part of the public record. We listen to a staff report. We ask any questions. We wait for the public to make their comments and then we have a discussion. And that discussion is one that all of us have a chance to have our say. We listen to each other. We show respect to each other and that is very important. And then after we have done all this, we will make our decision. Sometimes we add special attachments to the decision that we send on to the council. But the important thing and working with the team that's so important is we own the decision, each and every one of us. The policymaking decision is with the team, with, in this case, the planning commission. Even if you were not on the prevailing side of the vote, you own it because you participated. And that is probably one of the most important things to understand.
Thank you. What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Well, obviously I can do strategic planning and creative thinking. And I learned my issues. I do a lot of research when I do this. I also, though it's hard to tell because the alder tree is winning, as you can tell from my voice. Unfortunately, it's outside of my property lines. I can't cut it down. I have good communication skills, both verbal and in writing. I am also able to work with teams and able to focus to get something done. My weakness is, well, even knowing that there are times when I'm better off keeping my opinion to myself, I don't. I very direct. It's an East Coast trait. And when I speak, you don't have to wait for the second half of the sentence that comes after the but. I do not have patience for bureaucratic immobility and look for ways to get around it. You asked my weakness, are you going to get them? I also get frustrated with people who think the discussion is the outcome rather than the discussion being a step to reach the outcome. Too many people have never met a meeting that they didn't like. And they think they can sit around and talk about something and that takes care of it. It doesn't. And other than the fact they can't carry a tune, I think that's about it.
Describe any experience you have had with the town and town staff.
Okay, just I had to make a list. Give me a minute. Before we're moving to Corder Madera, on the recommendation of the county auditor controller, I did a full day workshop for both staff and the council members on redevelopment issues. Corder Madera was thinking about using redevelopment for where the Nooked Market now exists. So I taught that seminar all day. Since moving here, I have been on a planning commission. I'm vice chair. And as part of what I've done on the planning commission, other than usually of the public hearings, the building application. So I drafted the rules and procedures manual for the planning commission. I also with the commission chair, Peter Chase, we studied encroachment issues after it became a major issue before the council and the planning commission, I think it was 2017, and wrote a report for the staff on that. I drafted the design guidelines, which included the elements of good design. And I studied and drafted a report on dark sky. We really need in this town, the night sky preservation, some rules and regulations in order, having to do with nighttime lighting. They don't exist at all in residential sections. And now I am representing the planning commission on odds, which I guess fits me, which is objective design and development standards. It's a technical advisory working group where we're putting together.
15 seconds.
What?
You have 15 seconds if you want to finish that thought.
Oh, okay. It's putting together design aesthetic standards for multi-family and mixed use projects while the state is coming down and making more and more requirements for objective decision making.
Thank you. Okay, closing statement. We have two minutes to provide any additional information that you would like counsel to consider.
Okay, I'll start with a quote from Cigas Lewis, that you're never too old to set another goal or to dream a new dream. As I said before, old political activists don't fade away. We just keep on trying to make good trouble. I have the same fervor today and passion for community service, for public engagement, as I did when I was quite young and was one of the first students who was active in the civil rights movement. I think it's important to have civic engagement. It makes our communities better. It brings us together and public service is probably one of the best things that any of us can do to make a difference in our communities. I am applying for the vacancy because of how I feel about Corder Madera. It's a wonderful place to live. And it has wonderful services to fit all age groups. And I want to see it continue. I think the issues that are now facing you, looking at the work schedule that you gave earlier are very important issues that really affect our future. I think because of my background, my previous experience, I can hit the ground running and help make this town the great town it is and maybe even make it better in the future. I want to thank the council members for listening to us tonight and the staff for all the hard work that was put into this. I just hope that the person who was chosen is someone who will really work to make this town the best place it can be. Thank you. And I'll go get a drink to see if it helps.
Thanks, Phyllis. I don't see any follow-up questions from council members, so that's it. Go enjoy that drink. Great interview. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Okay, be right back.
Okay, I will move Phyllis over to the attendee side. And the final applicant I will bring over will be Robert Kamai. Welcome, Robert. You should be able to unmute your audio and share your camera.
Hi, Robert. Good evening.
Good afternoon.
It's nice to meet you. Thank you for joining us. So we have 15 minutes, six questions. You ready to get started?
Sure.
Okay, so we're going to start off with the opening statement. You have two to three minutes to briefly provide some of your background, to share why you are interested in being appointed to the town council and whether you would consider running for election in 2022 for the four-year term if appointed. All yours.
Great. Well, first, thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to, to apply and speak to you this evening. I have been around Corder Madera for a while. I was actually in the first, first grade class at San Clemente School, which was a couple of years ago. So I have some history in the community. And I know those of us who have been around for a while like to brag about it and it probably annoys people who haven't been here so long. But it gives me some background in things like remembering when in the majority of the city council, the mayor were recalled for proposing a giant landfill shopping center, which was thankfully revised down to the village shopping center. Or having actually had the opportunity to march the Fourth of July parade many, many years ago. And having, before I even had my own kids, running a boy scout trip in Corder Madera that took kids camping and, and was involved in the community. I've, I've also had some diversity in, in how I've been in the community. I have been a student, a parent. I have been a renter, homeowner, a landlord. I've lived in East Corder Madera, I've lived in West Corder Madera, I've lived in the hills, I've lived in the flats. I know what it is to require, to need flood insurance and I know what it is to walk up hills to, to home. So I know something about our community. I guess it's a little strange that in all of this time I've been here, I've never really been a part of a Corder Madera council or committee or task force or those kinds of groups. I've done tons of volunteer work and a little bit I'll talk about later, but not as part of the town. And on one obvious side that says, where have you been? Why haven't you been involved and what makes you think you'd be on the council? And I'm going to propose that you consider the alternate view, which is having seen Corder Madera from the outside for so long, I think there's things I see differently than people who have been in the middle of it for so long. I think I had a different view on the transparency of what the town does and how it's viewed. And I think also that I have a viewpoint that says, well, a lot of people come forward and, and say what they think, whether they like things the town is doing or whether they dislike things the town is doing. And probably you get much more of the latter from folks wanting to complain about something or other. But where, where is the rest of the community? Where are the people who don't really have time to come to council meetings or come to planning commission meetings or to write emails? Or who, who simply go to work, raise their kids, go on vacation a couple of weeks a year and shelter in place for the last year. And I, I think to some sense, I can, I can be a representative for those kinds of people. I am more of an activist than adjudicator. I would certainly sit on the role of a town council member reviewing legislation, but I would be out there trying to create new ideas and new legislation and to involve myself in what everyone is doing on the boards and commissions around the town. That's what I think I can bring initially to the council.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, question number one, as a member of the town council, you'll be responsible for serving a vibrant community with diverse needs. And sometimes you will find that one part of the community's needs may conflict with another's. Tell us how you would approach such a situation to ensure that all sides have their needs met.
Yeah, I thought this was a really good question because certainly that's the hardest thing is, is people coming up and people walking away satisfied and blaming the town or the council or the commission they're dealing with for things not going their way. My, my approach is, is this, obviously you need to listen. Everybody knows that. You need to understand what's the real issue that people are concerned about? What's bringing them there? What is it the town can do about it? And then the second thing is, is if I'm reviewing the issue, I need to research it. I need to do my homework. I need to know what we're talking about and what our choices are. And in reviewing every decision, I think it's important to be mindful of what the community goals are. You know, why are we doing this? What direction is it taking us? What's our purpose? What are we going to get out of this? And that's kind of guide the decision. It's got to guide how we address folks who are or aren't happy. So that leads you to finding common ground. What can we agree on at the outset? You know, there's certainly going to be points of contention, but let's start with our agreements before we move on to those. And then finally, I'm not as big a fan of compromise as I am of finding a better solution. Sometimes you, you get people head to head and you realize there's a third option than A or B. Maybe there's a C. And I like to spend time really exploring that. What can we do to solve this problem without getting anyone upset in it? And granted, that's a little, little bit of a Pollyanna view, but I think more and more, there are ways to, to answer questions without having someone be a loser. And that's of course, the, the biggest goal is how can we all come out winners by coming up with solutions that really address people's needs and fears?
Thank you. Describe your most typical role or approach as a team member and provide an example of when you have worked collaboratively within a team.
I've, I've done a lot of teamwork. My professional background is really in project management and that is mostly about bringing people together in teams and getting a job done. Yeah, I've done, of course, lots of volunteer work with committees and groups and boards and things like that. And as it's been described as herding cats, when you try to get volunteers to do something, because everybody has their own ideas and they have it. And you have no real control over them except their interest and enthusiasm for the tasks at his hand. I try to be, be someone who listens. I try to draw the shy participants in the group because sometimes they have the greatest knowledge and they present this perspective. I try to draw the shy participants in the group because sometimes they have the greatest knowledge and they present a perspective you hadn't thought of before. I, my contribution is typically data and analysis, bringing forth, you know, what's our universe of what we're working with to solve our problem and how are we going to do it? I, I'd like to corral discussions if I'm leading a group because sometimes they can get off topic and that's the hardest, most detrimental thing to a group is when you can't focus on what you want to do. And I typically raise ideas. I try to look at new ways of doing things and I try to actively support those, the other people in the group. I think my best example, my most recent example is I was the ride director for the Brin Century, which is a bike ride for twenty-two hundred people, a hundred miles in several different ways around the county. And when I went into that particular job, they had like this process of a three day setup and a two day tear down to put the, to the event together. And as I worked with the group, I managed to encourage them to try the first year. Well, maybe we cut that down to just two days and one day, a day and a half taking it down. And we worked together and when I proved myself that the ideas worked the first year, then the second year they were willing to to trust me a little before as we went to the next step, which was to do the whole thing and setting it all up in one day and taking it all down in one day. It saved literally thousands of dollars, which we then turned around and donated to a lot of groups in the community, including Redwood High School's Mountain Biking Club. But it was about bringing people along. It wasn't about saying we're going to do it this way. It's about saying, let's try this.
What do you consider to be your strengths and weaknesses?
Well, strengths first. I, I think I bring a very strategic orientation. I have a background in risk management and operations management. I've done that for a lot of years. And I think having a strong strategic orientation is important. I, as I think I've described, I have, I think I have a community institutional memory. I from, not from within the structure of the town, but as a citizen of the town, I've known what's been going on around Corder Madera for a very long time. I think I'm pragmatic and I think I pay attention to details and I'm the kind of person who rolls up the sleeves and gets the job done. On the weakness side, I had some real, I real frustrations or I'm sorry. I think you will find some real frustrations with me in a couple of ways. I am impatient with bureaucracy because I know things can work. They don't need to be tied up. I am not, I am a male. And I think if I were in your position, I would seriously consider the importance of having some diversity in the group. And while I bring a little bit of cultural diversity and being of civic islander heritage, I can see where it would be good to have a woman on this council. Having said that, I think I know enough about a lot of issues and diversity to be a real contributor, even if I am of the same gender as eighty percent of the council. I am typically frugal and have a natural skepticism. And that skepticism, I think people can find frustrating because I don't believe that I can accept anything at face value. I need to know that if I'm spending money, if I'm approving an ordinance, that it will have greater value to the community than it will cost. I tend to be the kind of person who asks for forgiveness, not permission. Some people find that annoying. And I, I will jump in to, to a project or a function with a great deal of enthusiasm. As long as everybody else is playing nice as an onboard too. And when that changes, then I, then I tend to, to get a little, little more prickly to deal with. That's about it.
Thank you. Describe an experience you have had with the town or town staff.
Um, over several years, I've dealt with the building department a few times and it's all worked out well. But probably the most recent experience, couple of recent experiences have been with Public Works. I work with Chris Good as, as he was taking on a project, the sewer project in the Marina Village area. And it raised, these two examples raised a couple of, of issues that I have some concern about. The issue for the sewer for the house that I have there is that there was an old lateral that went through that, that was creating a problem and needed to be disconnected. It ran under my property. But what I found and Chris was super into it with the town, you know, everybody I work with, the contractor and, and Chris were, were easy to deal with. But it raised an issue about the fact that five years ago, a member of the public work staff had approached me when I was just standing outside that house and was talking about this lateral that went under my property and how they were working on the sewer and how are they going to fix it? And then five years later, with a whole new staff, so it certainly wasn't their fault. They're back again, having almost completed the sewer project and the whole Marina Village area and said, we've just discovered this lateral line. And I'm concerned about where, how that happened. I don't think it was, it certainly wasn't the fault of the current staff. They worked with the information they have. But what are we doing to make sure that in the future, things that you learn now go forward? That happened to me too with a, a small example of Paradise Drive, right turn lane into Prince Royal Drive. I don't know if you know that area, but it gets a ton of bicycle traffic. And I went to a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee meeting and suggested when they redo that intersection, which, which you know, has been redone with some curbs and lights, that they put in a bike lane that, that goes to the left of the right turn lane so that you don't have a lot of cars that, as they go now, go into the right turn lane and have a lot of cross traffic. And the, the committee seemed very supportive of that, staff seemed supportive of that. Years, months later, I sent an inquiry into the staff about it and just quickly finishing that thought, when the work was done, apparently the whole concept got missed. And when I approached the, the staff about it, they said, well, things, the staff had changed and no one knew that that had happened, even though I'm fairly certain it was in the minutes. But again, continuity, I think is important.
Appreciate that. Okay, closing statement. You have two minutes to provide any additional information that you would like to, you would like the council to consider.
Well, I'd like you to know if it's not clear that, that if I was involved with the council, I would be very, very much an activist. I would go out and look for things to do. I have an interest in the big issues. Certainly things like infrastructure and community policing and transparency, which I think is very important and, and quarter does pretty well, but could do better. But I'm interested in the little issues too. I think it's important that we have a dog park that's a mud puddle. I think I'm concerned about the, the encroachment of weeds on the bike path that are destroying an investment there. I think street sweeping is an important thing because I've seen it not work as well as it could. I've told you that, that I believe that there, there are two kinds of approaches to being on something like the town council. One is to be the adjudicator to, to look at all the information and make decisions. The other is to go out and create the legislation, create the things that get done, delve into the new issues. And that's the kind of person that I would be. I've outlined a few ideas, probably some of them you think are crazy in the application I put forward. But I think it's important not to perfect what's going right, but instead to move on to new things and, and make Corder Madera a place for developing new ideas. I think we're going to deal with some, we're going to have some important issues thrust upon us to even more than they already have, things like housing. I think we've missed some opportunities in developing housing and I think we have to make sure that, that, that doesn't continue because it's only going to hurt us when, when the state comes in and forces us to do things. And it's to some extent, the county did that with, with the homeless sheltering. It was because in we, I think we could have been more ahead of the curve. I think we could have offered solutions ahead and that's what I'd like to be a part of. I guess that pretty much sums up what my interest would be in the city town council.
Great. Thank you, Robert. It looks like we have no additional comments from council members. That's it. I, great interview. I really appreciate it and it's nice meeting you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you too.
Thank you. Move you back to attendee side now.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this concludes the interview portion of tonight. The next step is, is public comment. I will put it back to the council if you'd like to take a quick five minute break before we, we begin public comment. This would maybe be the time to do that, but I leave it to you, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Thank you very much, Todd and Rebecca for running that so smoothly. And thank you to all of the candidates for, for sitting through that. I know it's not easy. I want to ask the council members, would anybody like to take a quick break? I don't know if anybody needs to go to the bathroom. Yeah, Bob, would, would you like a break? Okay, we'll take a quick five minute recess and we are going to reconvene. And we will open with a public comment on the candidates that we just interviewed and that'll start at seven oh six. All righty, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I will put up a recess screen.
And it looks like we are all back here. It is seven oh six. So as we said, we will reconvene our, our council meeting right now. This is an important and exciting process we're going through here. We're going to pick back up with public comment now. So we just heard from the nine remaining candidates. They all gave fantastic interviews. We're going to turn this open to members of the public now to give your thoughts or, or, you know, share any, any thoughts or reactions you had to any of the interviews or applications. I'm going to ask just so we can kind of properly budget time. If you are planning on making a public comment this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom. Now, just that we can kind of get a sense of how many comments to expect and budget appropriately. You can also comment by emailing publiccomment@tcml.org if you'd prefer not to speak and Rebecca will be monitoring that email address live just to see if we get any real time comments from folks who are on the line, but, but would prefer not to speak. I also just wanted to let folks know that we received almost sixty email public comments from residents, which is fantastic. Sometimes at our meetings, we will read those, those public comment emails out loud, but due to the volume, we're not going to be able to tonight, but those public comments have all been received by the council members and they're in the public record. So they're available for anybody to see as part of the record of this proceeding here. So with that, we've got a few hands up here. So we're going to go ahead and get started with public comment. We're going to start with Barbara and then go to Glenn and we will be giving folks. Oh, one hand has. Oh, we, we just had a little reshuffling. We're, we're going to do three minutes a person for a public comment on these interviews. You, of course, don't need to take that full time if you'd rather be concise. So we will start with Barbara, as I said, and then go to Glenn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Beckman and members of the town council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. It was a very impressive interview process and I really thank you all. I think our town council had, since we moved here in nineteen ninety-three, our town council has evolved so far over the years. I cannot believe it. It used to be kind of a closed gentleman's club and look at what's happened. It, it, I'm very impressed. But anyway. I think, you know, my husband and I, Mark Golderson, are longtime community activists. And we just wanted to put in a plug for Shannon Kennick, who we recruited and encouraged to run. She's a local native and a public health nurse and has an amazing leadership role in the community. I think she'd be a perfect fit for the community. I think you have a lot of really qualified people to choose from, so it's a tough choice. I don't envy any of you for this, but I know you'll make the right choice and I just hope you pick, you pick a woman. So yeah, but we're voting for Shannon and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Barbara. We're going to go to Glenn next, followed by Margaret.
Hi there. This is Glenn. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
First, I guess I just want to thank the council for taking this chunk of time out to help determine who our next council member will be. I certainly don't envy the decision you, you have to make. I think, you know, I've been making dinner here this evening and listening to the various candidates share their answers. It's a really difficult decision you have to make. I, I guess I did want to echo the last comment as far as I think, as far as the, the council thinks about this interim decision. I think enhancing the gender balance of the council would be a great asset as you think about making that next election. And just from my experience in knowing Leela Mongan, I think she would be a great asset and addition to the council from her extensive experience in the law and commitment to public service. Most recently with the city, as a city attorney in San Francisco, as well as her volunteer activity in the community. I think Leela would be a great addition. So just wanted to, to add that as you make your decision.
Thank you so much, Glenn. We're going to go next to Margaret, followed by Laura.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I don't know if I have to or not, but I want to sing the praises of Phyllis Metcalf. Even though she says she can't carry a tune, I have to know, I happen to know her tune is wonderful. She's enthusiastic about any project. Her research is incredible and the amount of time she devotes to it. Research, explaining it to everybody, documenting what she does. She is so thorough and she's a wonderful teacher. I'm new on the planning commission and she literally has almost been what I would call a mentor. She's an individual that this county is beyond lucky to have in our midst. And I can't recommend her more highly than I tell you now. She's just terrific. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Margaret. We're going to go to Laura next, followed by Maureen. And Laura, it looks like you're unmuted, so we should be able to hear you. Laura, we're not hearing you, so I'm not sure if we're having some audio issues potentially. I'm going to take you off right now and we'll come back to you. And then if that doesn't work, if we can't get your audio working, I would ask that you just submit your written comments to publiccomment@tcml.org and we'll be sure to read them out loud on here before we close public comment. So I'm going to take you off temporarily for now and we're going to go to Maureen, followed by Becky.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Maureen. I, I want to say that I think there's a lot of good people on applying for this. But we hope that you will very seriously consider Jordan Silver for a couple of reasons. I think he has really a lot to offer, high level skills to offer this town that would be beneficial to us. Also, he has a perspective from Christmas Tree Hill. And Christmas Tree Hill is not represented on the town council right now. And I think that is something that really has to be seriously considered by the council, that we are represented somewhere on the board. I agree, it would be wonderful to have a woman. But I think Jordan is really the right person for the right time to represent issue, issues that the hill has that are super important right now for the town. So I hope you'll consider him. I think he's absolutely a great person and would be a big asset for our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Maureen. We're going to go to Becky, followed by Gerard, and then we're going to come back and try Laura again.
Hi, I want to thank all the men. It's amazing what quality we have of applicants this time. I want to say it's a woman's turn. You've got to choose a woman. You don't have any choice, it seems to me. But I just want to thank all the men for coming forward and stay involved. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Becky. We're going to go to Gerard next.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. Thanks, everybody, for taking the time to do such a thorough evaluation. I just want to voice my support for Leela Mongan. Obviously, her resume is amazing. We're lucky to have her in the community, much less as a potential leader. But just also to her kind of understanding, not just of macro issues, but micro issues with people and how they relate to each other, particularly in this community. I think she would be such an asset, both on kind of a, you know, higher end macro level, but just also on the individual level, understanding just the nuances of the experiences here of the people in our town. And I, I think we're just so lucky to have her. I really hope that she advances to a leadership position. Our community, I think, will be better for it. And thank you all. I appreciate it so much.
Great. Thank you very much, Gerard. Let's see, I am not seeing Laura's hand on here anymore. So we're going to go to, oh, it's back up there. Okay, so we're going to bring Laura back on here and see if we've got that audio working. And then after that, we're going to go to Pat.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, with distance learning, I have like the worst computer in our entire house, but it's working now. Anyways, I already wrote you a letter. I thought giving like a really detailed and well thought out reason why I thought Leela Mongan, our neighbor and my friend for almost ten years would be a great addition to the council, but I wanted to speak here tonight to make another point. And that is that sometimes when you are appointing a council member, which is generally an elected position, it's a little tricky. And I think Leela has, it would be good for this position for so many reasons, but also because I think that she has the overwhelming support of our community. And when she does, and I hope she does, run for an election to the town council. I think that she would have so much support within people that live here. Also, you have an amazing bunch of candidates and it was really, really fun to hear everyone speak tonight. So thank you for that.
Great. Thank you so much, Laura. And we're going to go to Pat next. Great. Thank you so much, Laura. And we're going to go to Pat next.
Oh, here we go. Okay, sorry about that. Hi, I am really loving this conversation tonight. I feel like we've just had a wonderful town conversation about Corder Madera. And I do want to endorse somebody. I wasn't planning to do this, but I read all of the resumes, all of the applications, listened to all of the interviews. And to me, Phyllis Metcalf is just heads and tails the person for the job. It's a complicated job. There's a lot of interagency dealing going on and to have somebody with that experience able to just step right in. And and get off the ground running. And I really would encourage the others, oh, my gosh, the candidates are so amazing. Leela and the rest, maybe get on the planning commission. There'll be a spot on the planning commission coming open. And do stay involved with the town. But Phyllis, wow, I didn't know her resume was quite as extensive and her abilities were. Commensurate. So my strong recommendation for her. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Pat. We're going to go to Jen next. And Jen, you should be able to unmute yourself whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Jen Larson. I I'm here to support Jim Andrews. I think he has impeccable qualifications for this role. He was one of the key architects of the financial plan for the current, for the current Corder Madera. And things work really well, very efficiently, when Jim has his hands in them. He's one of the few people I know that can look out and I think he mentioned the word matrix. Jim doesn't just look at things that are two or three feet ahead of him. He looks at the sequelae of every action and is able to plan down the road. For what may happen in five or ten years as a result of various decisions. Everybody gave a great interview. A lot of people have amazing qualifications on the softer side of things. Everybody talked about being able to listen and be empathetic and all of that is necessary. But unable to remain solvent and keep our town where it needs to be, we really need somebody with heavy, heavy financial experience. And that would be Jim. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. I am not seeing any other hands up at this time. Oh, here we have a hand up from Marla Orts. We're going to hear from Marla next.
Hi, I would like to echo Jen's comments. I've been in this town for sixty-three years. I have been a CEO or senior executive for forty-five of those years. I worked with both Todd Cusmano and Jim to pass the measure F. Tax override. Because of Jim, he passed things that were near and dear to my heart. Which are the fire prevention and vegetation management. Herefore, it got absolutely no attention. It's absolutely not a sexy topic, but it is what may save our skin. In the next fire storm. I've worked with Jim and I've learned a lot from Jim on the financial perspective. And I have a pretty good acumen in terms of how to balance competing. Priorities, but we have so much in this town that we are grappling with. We have COVID, we have loss of business, we have a hundred million dollar per posse level climate change. We have an unfended pension liability, which has been my bitch for twenty-some years. That's been kicked down the can. We need people who understand the issues. All issues are local. Jim served for four years. Jim has very good business acumen. I would like to vote on the side of experience, not to take anything away from any of the candidates. I think it's fantastic. We couldn't get anybody to run two cycles ago. God bless. We've got that. That means people are engaged. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marla. That appears to be our last hand up, so I'm going to ask Rebecca if we've gotten any email public comments from folks who are on the line here tonight. And just email their comments during public comment and would prefer not to to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. We did receive two emailed public comments since the meeting began, but I don't. Know. We'll just check. It does not appear that the two people could stay in the meeting and they wanted to have their comments submitted. I will read one. Yeah. The first is from Katie Hart, who says, hi, Corder Madera Town Council. I write advocate for Emily Charlie, who was running for the vacant town council seat and I believe interviews this week. Here are some key attributes that I think would make her the best candidate. Emily cares deeply about the community and invests the time to improve our community for everyone. She was a driving force in getting the Skunk Park playground updated and collaborating with the town and our neighborhood to enhance anti-speeding measure. On El Camino Drive where we both live. Emily is a skilled professional and parent. She understands the challenges of bringing up a young child in our community. And will advocate for all things that make Corder Madera an incredible place to raise children. She is also a litigator, so brings unique and valuable skills to a local government team. Emily is a wonderful friend. She stands up for those she cares about. She speaks up when something isn't right. She is biased for action. If something isn't right, she wants to fix it. She is intelligent, thoughtful, kind, inclusive. I am proud to support Emily and her candidacy for Corder Madera Town Council. From Katie Hart, El Camino Drive.
Great. Thank you very much, Katie.
And then the second emailed public comment we received is from Megan DeGrave. Who says, dear Corder Madera Town Council, although I regret potentially having missed the deadline, I am writing to endorse Shannon Kennick for town council. I have had the privilege of knowing Shannon since, well, ever since she became my neighbor more than ten years ago. I am confident that her character, intelligence, wisdom, integrity, judgment. Would make you proud to call her a fellow council member and her long-term dedication to and knowledge about her community. Can-do approach to all that she takes on, endless energy and dedication and values of fairness and equality. Would serve Corder Madera in a way that is both meaningful and significant. When assembling a team of any kind, Shannon would top my list of recruits. Sincerely, Megan DeGrave, Willow Avenue. And we did just receive one more while I was reading that.
Great.
From. Catherine Napier. I apologize if I mispronounced that, who says, to whom it may concern, I'd like to share my support for Emily for town council. She is an experienced lawyer and dedicated mother to her son, a student at the Cove. I've witnessed firsthand how Emily goes above and beyond in supporting her community. And I believe she would provide a unique and much needed point of view on the council. Thank you for your consideration. Best, Catherine Napier.
Perfect. Thank you, Catherine, and thank you, Rebecca, for reading those. At this time, we don't have.
Emails will be uploaded to the PDF that's currently on linked on the agenda as soon as the meeting's over.
Perfect. Thank you. At this time, we don't have any other hands up, so we're going to close public comment and bring it back for the council deliberation. Portion of this. I know that, so we just heard from nine candidates, but you know, I think fantastic candidates all around. I think maybe the best way to do this is we'll just run kind of one by one through the council members. And we'll ask each council member to kind of give real quick their sort of high level, you know, what are you looking for in in the candidate to to join the council? And then I think if we have all of the council members share kind of their top two from the interviews, I think that'll help us kind of start to narrow down the field. And see where there's overlap in terms of the strongest candidates and we'll go from there. Who would like to start us off? Sure, Bob.
Sure, why not? First off, thank you, everybody. I mean, what an amazing group. Even the two who did an interview, just incredible. And Eli, Fred and Charles, I have a great idea. I think we should all resign. And we should appoint five of these people because they're so much better than most of us. Just a great group and we have, that makes our decision tonight incredibly difficult. I'll tell you what I've been looking for. First and foremost, experience in working with the town and staff, knowing how the town staff operates. And knowing how to work with the staff, I think, is really, really critical. We have a difficult job on the council. We have a lot to do. COVID has made our job harder because it has made the count, the staff's job so much harder. The staff is under incredible duress. Working under incredibly difficult conditions right now and everything is harder and that makes it tougher for us. So people who know how to work with the town, I think, is really critical. Knowing how to work with other people on a board, I think, is really super important. Because we all need to be able to work together and as you learn very quickly, you don't do anything unless you have two other council members to support you. So it's really critical to know how to work on a board. And also is really important to know how to work in public meetings, because we don't just work on this board. All of us work on other boards as well. And the new council member will be that too. So we're going to be, whoever does this is going to be in a lot of public meetings and a lot of boards. The ability to dedicate the time to understand really complex issues and problems. And reach a decision that is in the best interest of the town, I think, is another really critical factor. If you look at just what we've done in the last couple of months. Pension fund bonds, the homelessness project, the climate adaptation plan, because a third of the town is in flood zone and a third of the town is in the wildland urban interface. Really difficult stuff and all complex and all different. And whoever comes on, the next big thing we're going to deal with. And I think I'm the only other one who's been through this is the housing element. And the housing element is going to be complicated. It's going to be difficult. And it's going to involve a lot of public input. So we need someone who can step in and really dive into all of those things. And be able to do all of those things. In terms of, you wanted us to talk about who we liked as well, Eli?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
Again, incredibly difficult decision because such a great group of people. I would put at the top of my list, Phyllis Metcalf. She has demonstrated that she, through her public service for the town, she is a smart, thoughtful person. She has evaluated incredibly difficult issues with no bias. And she always does what is in the best interest of the town and the community. I watched her in planning commission meetings. And she also understands how to work with a public meeting. And, you know, I think the planning commission job is probably the toughest job in town. It's probably tougher in a lot of ways than what we do. Because people are incredibly emotional. You know, we sometimes get issues bumped up to us, but it's a tough job and Phyllis has done it really, really well. She also knows how to work with public planning. I thought what she talked about with the Tamil Vista corridor study, her work on that was really great. I loved her quote about discussion is not an outcome. That's so true and so useful. Because we have to make a lot of tough decisions and she's not afraid to do it. And I really admire that about her. And she also clearly knows how to work on a board. She's worked on, you know, the planning commission board, but she worked college in Marin. She's worked on all kinds of boards. She's done it for several years. I think she would fit right in, step right in and do a great job. So she would be my top choice. I would put Leela second for a lot of the same reasons, but that's what I think and I won't take any more time. Other than the fact, as I said, we should all resign and appoint five of these guys because great people. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Who would like to go next? And I'm happy to if that would be helpful. So I'll just jump in and say, you know, as I said, fantastic candidates all around. I think we all agree. And I hope that, you know, I hope the other eight who who aren't selected tonight are are going to, you know, continue their interest in public service and in serving our community. In other ways, whether that's on our boards and commissions, you know, serving, working the NRGs, other volunteer worker, running for council in the future. And I want to thank everybody for their, for their interest and involvement. I think what, you know, the the kind of top qualities that I'm looking for. Would be really, you know, the the dedication to and investment in the Corder Madera community, you know, the compassion, willingness to listen and learn. Sense of responsibility and, you know, pragmatic and collaborative problem solving skills. And I think we saw that in spades, frankly, in all these candidates. So it was a really difficult decision to to kind of winnow down the field. I think after, you know, considering all of these applications in detail, similar to Bob, I think I land that my top two would be Leela and Phyllis. So that's, that's where I stand just based on everything we saw. But again, tough choice, just, you know, a fantastic field of candidates here. And I'd love to hear Fred and Charles' thoughts. Yeah, Fred.
Now, go ahead and go. Hey, Bob, instead of all of us resigning, how about we just add nine more people to the council? So we wind up with a fourteen, Todd's laughing, he would love that.
Our meetings are already long enough. I think that would be.
Just, just the roll call alone. But I want to thank everybody. I think, you know, this, I think the applicants just demonstrate the level of quality of people we have in Corder Madera. And the level of people that are willing to step up. The other ones I'd like to thank is staff for putting this together. Because I think the whole process was really well thought out from the application to the interview process to even the ability. For applicants to reach out to staff and other council members. I thought that was really well done. So I appreciate staff. Their input into that and coming up with that process. I think it's really well done. You know me, sometimes I keep things shorter. I'm looking for somebody who's strong in collaboration, because I think that's a key point. Somebody who's strong with community involvement and also leadership. Those are kind of like my three top ones. The top two people I have, it's number one for me, it's Leela. I have had the opportunity to both work with her. Through the Casa Blaina project and I found through that process and working with her. She was able to rise up to a leadership role as far as taking charge on the communication side. And I think that's a key thing with community involvement. She stepped up for that also. And I did her and there's a few others. I had the opportunity to speak one-on-one with the actually reached out to me. So I think that also, I just had a comfort level with her also. So my number one is Leela. And then after that, I go to Emily and also to, I'm going to say Catherine, because I'm going to say her name incorrectly. Because I'm really bad with names. Is it Shannon? Those would be my next two, but for me, the top one is Leela. I just think she'd be a great fit for the council.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Charles, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so all great candidates. I'll cut it short. You know, I need to address Phyllis. I worked with her on the planning commission and she, everything that Bob said about her is true. But I also think she does a great job on the planning commission and we will need good leadership on the planning commission as well. And honestly, you know, I was really challenged and I think the town was challenged by recent events with the. The shelter coming in, right? And I think everybody saw that as a negative and I saw it quickly change. And I saw it change in a very beautiful and positive way that almost, you know, brought tears to my eyes that we could basically benefit as a community. And manifest all the beliefs that we have. And I really believe that Leela Longan was a huge source of that. And so if she can effectively do that around the town for many more initiatives, I think I'm very excited about our future. You know, I definitely respect everybody that stepped up, that's been contributing forever. But, you know, I'd also like to personally, just being a newcomer, right, to also allow other people access. To governance and try it out. So that's also why I could also recommend Shannon. Because she's been in the community for so long and I think part of it is, is, you know, I ran unopposed, right? I volunteered and there was questions on the board then, oh, well, you know, do we take it to election? Or do we just appoint people, right? And it was, we want you exposed to the people. So in my mind, one of the things I think is. Out of all these candidates, which ones, if they got on the ballot with how they integrate with the community and what they represent, would be there anyway? And that's, that's how I came to this after reading everything and really listening and talking to them and seeing them be communicators. Those three in particular had all called me. So I think that that's an important thing to keep in mind. Is current and continued conversations and communication as that's one of our pressing issues in the town. And, you know, I think transparency is only as far as the phone, so, you know. So that being said, yeah, Leela first and then Shannon second and then Phyllis. Kind of tied for second, but I really have always loved working with her on the planning commission. I think she has a lot of initiatives. In the works and I look forward to seeing how that manifests. So and then also. I'd like to thank James and Carl for their continued support on the the finance commission. And then everybody else, I would like to ask you to join any other board or run next year because. And then everybody else, I would like to ask you to join any other board or run next year because we're just, I'm so excited about the participation. You know, we had over 50 people on the call this entire time. People care about politics more than anything and, and it's just great all around, so.
That's great, Charles. Thank you. So just based on the, that, what we just heard from, from the council and obviously I don't, I don't want to reduce this to, you know, like a point system because there's so much to to each of these candidates and they're all such, you know, you know, multi-dimensional and I think talented individuals. But it sounds like we had kind of, you know, so to speak, sort of three first place votes for Leela and one first place vote for Phyllis. And then we had a second place vote for Phyllis, a second place vote for Leela and then split, if you will, second place votes between Emily and Shannon and then Shannon and Phyllis. So it, it, it looks to me like there's a, you know, a clear preference, you know, for, you know, Leela is kind of the, the first place candidate. Certainly want to open this up to, to any council members who want to share any further thoughts. I, as I said, I would be thrilled to, to take Leela on here, but definitely want to, you know, make sure we explore this fully. Yeah, Fred.
Yeah. Once I'm going to cut to the chase, if there's no, no other comments, I like to make the motion, I would go ahead and, and appoint Leela Monken to the town council.
Great. And it looks like Charles seconds the motion. So Rebecca, that would mean we are ready for a vote, please. And the motion is to nominate Leela Monken to the Cora Madera Town Council.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much, Rebecca. Congratulations, Leela, and thank you again to all of the candidates. I mean, truly just a fantastic field, a really tough decision for us certainly. And we really appreciate everybody's involvement and their interest in serving the community here. And we look forward to continuing to work with you and serving our community in the future. So thanks again to everybody. Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, can you just mention when Leela will be sworn in and when that process will take place? Everybody's kind of aware of it. Thanks.
Great point. Thank you, Fred. Leela is going to be sworn in at the beginning of our next council meeting, which is going to be Tuesday, April 6th at 6:30 PM. And there will be more information coming out about that as there is for every council meeting through the town's website. Thank you, Fred. Good point. And so that brings us to item number three on tonight's agenda, which is open time for public comment. Thank you, everybody, for, for sitting through this lengthy process up until this point. We just have a little more business to get to tonight. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to any items that are not on the agenda. So that means not, you know, not related to the, the council vacancy and appointment. We're going to give three minutes apiece for folks to speak on, again, any items that are not on the agenda. Please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcml.org if you would like to speak to anything. And not seeing any hands go up on Zoom, Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments for open time at this meeting?
We did not receive any additional emails, public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to item four. Then we're going to close. Open time item four is the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council or public can pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion if they wish to. Would any members of the council like to pull any of the consent calendar items? Seeing none, we'll turn this over to the public. Would any members of the public like to either pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion or comment on the consent calendar as a whole? And seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion on the consent calendar. Yeah, Bob?
Move items four A through four H.
Thank you very much. Fred seconds. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. That brings us to council reports and we're going to start with the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just really quickly, most importantly, starting tomorrow, I'm going to be away from the office. I'm going to, I'll be away from, starting tomorrow until Monday, the 29th. And during my absence, I'll be putting Rebecca Vaughn in charge of all town operations. So we're in good hands there. Thanks, Rebecca. And then I just want council to note too, staff shares the same, just really impressive with those that are already connected to the town and all of the committees. We really lean on a lot of those applicants right now and how we move things forward and when we problem solve and bring things to council. All the new leadership that you saw today, staff starting tonight and tomorrow morning, we will follow up with them and we will encourage them to be involved. Just amazing group. And so we're going to do everything we can to keep them engaged as we move forward on our boards and commissions or even just, you know, staff also has some specific groups where we just problem solve. We whiteboard issues together with people that just have, you know, that really thoughtful, you know, problem solving approach to things. And so this group will absolutely, at 100% of them, you know, will be encouraged to be part of that. And that's all. And the only other thing is, and it'll be on our upcoming agenda item, but we are bringing back the pension bond conversation. We've had an additional update regarding really the most key component to this whole thing is, is the policy behind it. You know, we were misquoted about saying, hey, we're going to save money. Well, we are saving money. It's called an arbitrage. And what do you do with that 750,000 plus arbitrage savings annually? Well, it's backing it up with policy of having decision points on an annual basis for council to consider. The sales tax oversight committee's reviewed it. They've provided recommendations. They will present along with staff to council that update at the next meeting to get direction from the council and hopefully approve that policy. And then at the April 20th meeting, we'll come back and ask council to consider bonding our pension obligations as a whole. The timing, as we've gone forward, has improved from the interest rates. You know, last year, they're in the 4% range. When we started this conversation a few months ago, it was in the high 3% range. It's actually lowered to the low 3% range. So you know, this is the opportunity for council to consider it. We're excited to have this conversation with you moving forward. And I just, we have a lot of people on this call right now. We hope you join us as well. Because as stated on a lot of council candidates, this is a big issue. We need to, we need to position ourselves to have all the tools in the toolbox to solve this problem over the next 20 to 30 years. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Todd. We'll go to council member reports. Fred, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, just two things. I attended Ross Valley Paramedic Authority meeting, which was last week. Just two things in that meeting. One is we approved the, the audited financial statements. And then the second thing is I was appointed as vice chair of the authority. And then the second thing is last, I think, Monday, I attended the finance, I had a committee, committee meeting. I can't tell you what a great group of financial minds and geniuses we have in this town. It was just the whole, I, five hours later, I'm still thinking about that meeting. It was just one of those things. It was totally impressive. Just the discussion points. It's like Todd mentioned, there's going to be a lot of things coming back about policy, the pension bonds. A lot of that stuff is stemming out of that committee. And again, I'll say it again, but it's just a great group of people. I don't know if Todd assembled them, if it's been over years. I mean, a couple of them were applicants today. Great group though, and I think there's a lot of good things coming out of that committee. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you, Fred. Charles, would you like to report?
Um, no, nothing to report. I did, I did want to ask Todd, I thought I saw Marin IJ alert come up that a new article about going into orange next week possibly. And if you had any information about that, if you wanted to share.
Sure, I'm sorry. It's an update that I should have provided. Thank you, Councilmember Lee, for the opportunity. You know, this last week, we missed it by point two or 3% on one of the objective items that they evaluate us on. Currently, if we continue at the current trend, the county health official estimates that next Tuesday, March 23rd, that we will move to the orange. And so again, that, that is again, if we continue on the current trajectory, but we're, we're headed the right way, which would be a big for our county. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Todd. A great question. Charles, Bob, anything to report?
Yeah, two things, which actually I should have reported in the last meeting and I just somehow forgot to do it. But we had a homeless committee meeting from the county. And one of the key topics was Project Home Key and how excited everybody was about it and how successful it was. So that was terrific. And we also had a BPAC meeting. And it will be coming to the council, but we finally have a solution to the spot on Paradise where San Clemente meets Paradise and the bike path comes around that corner and the sidewalk's really tight. We have a proposal that will be coming to the council soon and I'm excited about that. And some of the came up tonight, we also talked about El Camino and controlling speed on El Camino and we have solutions for that too. Thanks.
Fantastic. Thanks so much. And real quick from me, two things. One, the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities is going to be having a meeting tomorrow with Senator Dodd. He is not our senator, but this is part of our, our meeting series that we're doing. We're trying to get our division before every single state and federal legislator that represents all parts of the division. And so, you know, it's just good FaceTime for, for all of the, you know, North Bay elected officials with, with our representatives. I just wanted to, to mention that to you guys in case any, you know, council members or staff have any issues that they'd like me to raise or if they want to attend and raise any issues themselves or, you know, questions to, to ask of Senator Dodd. So I just thought I'd put that out there and let you guys know. And the only other thing, last Tuesday, March 9th, I attended a meeting of the Board of Directors of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. Not much to report there, continues running beautifully. It's a fantastically run organization. I think Cora Madera is well served. And that is all I have. So that will bring us to item eight, which is discussion of the draft agenda for our next council meeting. That'll be the April 6th council meeting. Would anybody like to make any comments on that draft agenda? And if not, we can adjourn the council meeting. I believe we do have a brief SD2 meeting, right? We've got a consent calendar there, so we're going to adjourn the town council meeting and convene the Tuesday, March 16th meeting of the sanitary district to board of directors. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Board member Casissa? Board member Lee?
Here.
Board member Avasio?
Here.
Board President Beckman.
Here, thank you very much. We will wave the salute to the flag as we just did that for the council meeting. That brings us to open time for public comment, which is an opportunity for any members of the public to comment on any items that are not on the agenda today. Members of the public will be given three minutes apiece and can either raise their hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcml.org. If you'd like to make any comments for open time on items not on our agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand now. And I'll ask Rebecca if we got any emailed public comments for SD2 open time.
No, we did not receive any email public comments for SD2 open time.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up on Zoom, so we're going to close open time. There are no presentations, which brings us to item four, the consent calendar. This is an opportunity for members of the public, or excuse, I'm getting ahead of myself there. The, the consent calendar are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the board of directors or the public may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Would any members of the board like to pull a consent calendar item? Seeing none, would any members of the public like to pull any items from the sanitary district to consent calendar? Not seeing any, so we're going to bring it back to the board of directors for a motion on the consent calendar. Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion. We approved consent items for A through four C.
Great, thank you. Is there, great, thank you, Bob. Seconds. And Rebecca, whenever you're ready.
Board member Casissa? Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avasio?
Yes.
Board President Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. There are no public hearings or business items, which brings us to item seven, district manager and board member reports. Is there a district manager report? All right, any board member reports? Any comments on our draft agenda for the following meeting? Then we are adjourned, everybody. Have a great evening. Thank you for bearing with us and congratulations again to Leela. I look forward to working with you. Good night, everybody.